The following program is sponsored by the Greek, Ely's Radio Shack Dealer, at 570 Altman in downtown Ely, and brought to you as a public service by Georgetown Media in Ely, Nevada. White Pine County Commission Meeting, July 28th, 2021.
If I can just remind everybody, please sign into the background.
Good morning and welcome to the regular scheduled White Pine County Commission Meeting on July 28th. Would you all please stand and join us with what? In Ely, you're new, why don't you?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As is normal at the start of each meeting, we would have a moment of silence, a prayer, meditation, whatever you like, so the first moment is a moment of silence. comment. Is there any public comment on the phone, Michael? Anyone on the phone?
I'd like to comment.
Anyone in the audience?
Yes.
Please come forward, state your name.
Good morning. My name is Sherman Raynell, Shirley Puckett Raynell. I grew up here, but left forty-seven years ago. So I have a house similar to it with my parents, and I am fixing to kind of share my time between both states. I just returned, it's gone two and a half months. The feral cats have desecrated my property horribly. I have had to replace porches, they've destroyed my porches. My yard, I just had twelve tons of gravel put in yesterday because they desecrated the grass in the yard so bad. I'm a widow, want a fixed income, it's costing me literally thousands of dollars now to fix up this mess from the feral cats. So the other issue coincides, there's two vacant properties next to me, apparently someone owns them, but no one actually does anything. The one next to me, the people come a few times a year, every time they come, they bring more stuff in, and they just keep piling it up. I've done a lot of research on the feral cats. I know why they live there, there's a hole where they can go into the house, quite a large section. I've had to call a water company on them because water was cascading down the walls last winter, frozen. They do nothing, they just bring stuff and pile it up. And the cats live there, and they also live in the one back behind me, and I know the gentleman, he lives here in town, here in Ely. The house is all open, kids can run through it, cats can run through it. I called the sheriff the other day because the kids were up on the roof of the garage, and they were their kids, adolescents, and they had, I get it, they're kids and they're bored, it's rude, but they had climbed on the roof of the garage, pulled up doors because there's so much junk laying around, put the door across to the house, made bridges, and they're going back and forth. Okay, about an hour I put up with that, then they left. About four hours later, they came back with more kids, now some teenagers. It's getting dark, and they're all doing this. They've got, you know, several, I called the sheriff, I don't think anyone came because I watched the whole time the kids were there. I don't know what to do, I'm so frustrated. I realize the feral cat is, the whole thing is an issue in White Pine County. I see it on your agenda, the last how many meetings, I have a friend who has sent me those things. Everyone's talking about it, but I don't see anything being done. I literally am looking at about twenty-five, thirty feral cats next door to me, and that's just there. The other end of town, there's at least that many, they're all over, it's there, I think there's more cats than humans in roof now, probably. And I get that you know it's a problem, but I wanted my voice to be heard, thank you for this time, thank you for allowing me, but I'm not even a permanent resident, I'm a, I split my time, and I'm like, how come no one else is as upset as I am? But literally, now that it's costing me this much money, now I'm really upset. I, seriously, I don't even know how many thousands I've spent since I came back. So I just really would like an answer to what is going to be done with the feral cat situation. You know, we can't put the animals above the humans, and that's kind of what's happening. So thank you for your time, and would like to hear if there's any thing on the agenda as far as actually getting something done about it.
So I'd like to address that if I can, I may. We actually passed an ordinance that allows us to deal with the feral cats, we haven't just been talking about it. So when you see feral cats, you need to call Animal Control, and he now has the authority to deal with them.
Okay.
And if you see somebody feeding feral cats on public parks.
They do.
Then you call the Sheriff's Department, and I now have the authority to deal with it.
Okay. Thank you for that, because last year I did call Animal Control, his solution was for me to deal with them.
We didn't have anything on the books.
Okay, now it is. Thank you, I'm happy to hear that. Thank you for addressing that.
Thank you for your comments.
What is your address up there?
Seventeen Jimper Street.
Seventeen Jimper Street.
And the house next door to me, then would probably be fifteen, the one behind me would be the corner of Sunshine and Sekt. By the way, I've called on those houses too, and again, nothing, so, thank you for your time, I appreciate it.
Thank you for your comments. Is there any other public comment in the building? Anyone? Please come forward, state your name.
My name's Mark Jones. We moved to this area three years ago from California, and my question, and I don't know if I'm out of order now, I haven't been to a meeting before, or this should be brought up at the discussion point, but I live in Duck Creek, and I've just recently found out through the grapevine of this, I'm going to call it hydroelectric proposed pro, program up there. And the, I don't know if it's going to be good or bad for the community, my background is career for construction, my entire life in California, I've worked on, my companies worked on these types of projects, and what is always presented by the developer is all the benefit for the community, and what I've been able to ascertain about this, I don't see any long-term benefit for the community. And up here, I believe water's worth its weight in gold, certainly during this drought period, and to take a natural resource from this community, from that valley, to generate hydropower for out-of-area consumers, no consumers here, is an ill-fated effort that, basically, I just don't see the benefit for the people of this community. I intend to spend my, the rest of my life here, my wife and I, my children, and how do I get more detailed information on this? In California, and I'm not putting you with Nevada laws, but in California, a project of this magnitude, the developers required well in advance to notify everybody in the area, either through public notice or direct correspondence. And in my area, BLM is doing that project, it's been under the works for years of mastication, reparation of the environment, and since we've been here three years, I've received numerous letters from them, they're all sent to my return receipts so that I am lawfully notified. I've not heard any lawful notification on this project, I've heard it as street talk. And so that's why I'm here, to find out at this stage in the beginning, what's really occurring and what isn't occurring, because, you know, street talk, you know, if I tell you something, Lori, or I tell you, Richard, something, by the time it comes back around to him, it's entirely different. And I wish to be educated, to know what my rights are in the looking forward to this, because I believe that project will detrimentally change the valley up there, long-term, that it's not something that can be dealt with on a short-term basis, and, you know, I have my own thoughts about the whole Federal Green Energy Program, and the money, where the money's ending up, that is it going to some, you know, like Joe Biden's brother that did all the construction work and racked with zero background, but it was hired by the contractor, so they were guaranteed that money in that job. And, you know, I'm wondering if the same thing exists here with this program.
Yeah, and I'll just speak to that real quick. We have a 10:30 item from the, from the storage facility today, there's a 2 o'clock public hearing tomorrow, a public luncheon and presentation tomorrow at 2 o'clock at the convention center, so they, your timing is good, they're here today, and there'll be a detailed report, and then there'll be another one, but they have been to the county commission several times, and it's been open public comment period on it. So those questions, if you want to stick around for the 10:30, they'll be here to answer them, and they'll also be here at 2 o'clock tomorrow at the convention center, and for the public to come, and they'll do a Q and A, so you might find some information out there.
Well, then I wasted your time, but I know I was not realizing if, you know, at the 10:30, there was open discussion then, or if you just had discussion at this point, and then carry on with your business rather than us interrupting you.
It's an update, and public comment is always welcome, and it's a public, the meeting is a discussion update, so you'll be able to come, I think you'll be able to comment then, for sure tomorrow at the two, at the 2 o'clock.
And that's at the convention?
That's at the convention. Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, is there any other public comment in the building? I'll ask one more time, George, on the phone, and then we'll let you go. Anybody on the phone? Any public comment on the phone? Hearing none, seeing none, George, please go forward.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, on your agenda, item 11, I want to remind you, in relation to the Chip Seal Project just completed on Avenue D between Weta Machinery and the Prospector, that it does not meet city code. No curb, no gutter, no sidewalk, no ADA compliance. Do not circumvent city codes a matter, outweigh the mayor and the city engineer. On the lower west end of Seventh Street, intersecting Avenue C, curb and gutter was not put in to protect the new asphalt that Q and D just put in. At earlier RTC meetings, I was told curb and gutter would be installed with the state Q and D project. We're going to lose improvements. You've been on the RTC, you've heard me talk about it more than once, you need to address that. Mr. Chairman, I attended the tour report yesterday, July 27th, 2021, there's a problem with the pointies showing up, so, some are showing up sporadically, the meeting started late because of a lack of quorum, then started with a Zoom participant, then stopped because of a Zoom drop, then started for a short while, then the meeting was stopped again short of the agenda because of lack of quorum. Either you put people on these boards that can attend, or you take them off, we can't keep this up. Mr. Chairman, I've tried approximately twenty to twenty-one times to get a building permit to rectify a notice of abatement on one of my properties. I've been to RTC meetings, county commission meetings, EDC council meetings, as well as numerous attempts at City Hall to get the permit. You allowed the community choir temporarily repair their building, their centennial building, no contractor, no permit, no licensed handyman, only volunteers or members. I want the same consideration, I want equal protection under the law. If the building inspector will not issue a permit, then this commission needs to give me one so I can start. I don't want to be cited and then get hung out to dry. Mr. Chairman, on numerous occasions, I've asked for a complete list of those that have been given a permit to rent their property to RVs or motorhomes, as of today, I've not received anything. I see RVs, motorhomes popping up all over town, on the streets, yet I've not seen any reports from the city county building inspector or the regional planning commission. Everybody needs a permit, or at least that's what they tell me. I'm the only one that's got two citations facing $355. I had to evict the people, yet all around me, you guys are around. Stop the discrimination.
That, those are, those are in the city, unless you're.
RTC, Regional Planning.
Still the city, so.
No, 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 you've got a building inspector that's selectively enforcing law. Once you get rid of your half, I'll go address it again at the other half.
Okay.
But it's got to stop. Mr. Chairman, I've seen nothing on your agenda in regards to the county pulling the support from Predators Park. You guys have called it a heritage park. Again, I remind you, your primary concern should be for child safety, you're ignoring the facts. You recently had an incident involving a miner and a truck driver. You also have an NRS that says you can't have liquor or gaming within a thousand feet. You guys are failing miserably. Either enforce the law, or get somebody who will.
Okay, George, your three minutes are up, thank you.
I'll be back.
All right.
I want some answers. You know, you've been with the government for quite some time, sir.
Thank you.
And, yeah, no, I'm not going to thank you, I want some answers.
Thank you for your comments. Are there any other comments in the building? And we hear none on the phone, is that right, last call on the phone? And there are none, so at this time, we are going to go back into the county commission meeting, and the first item on page two, item one, is untimed items, and we will temporary recess the county commission meeting for a special White Pine County Fire Commission meeting. And the first item in the nine o'clock special fire commission meeting is public comment. Is there any public comment on the phone on the fire commission? No? Anyone in the building? No? George, do you have some?
I do.
Mr. Chairman, on numerous occasions, including the last time I gave you something in writing in regarding the ingress egress on Avenue D, doesn't meet city code, it's a violation, it needs to be addressed. Now, if you're a fire chief, city and county have addressed it, I want that in writing, and then I'm going to go to the next step, but you're ignoring me, and it needs to be rectified before something stupid happens. I need an answer. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment in the fire district? On the phone? Hearing none, seeing none, we'll move forward, and the first item on page two, item A, the nine o'clock special fire commission meeting, is number one, is discussion for possible action, the approval of the FY 21, 2021, 2022 debt management policy indebtedness and five-year capital improvement plan for force for White Pine County Fire Protection District. Elizabeth, Elizabeth isn't here, so I'll let anybody do addresses.
Yeah, so this is just an annual item that needs to, you guys can, the items are in your backup for review. If you have any questions, I can answer them, but we need to get these signed and approved and sent off to the state fire office.
Any, Commissioner Goddard, any comment? Anything? Travis, you got anything to say?
Well, this is a sound good meeting.
Okay, I'll inform the public and everyone on the phone. Commissioner Goddard is on Zoom today, so that's why his presence isn't here, but he is available and he is on Zoom. So that being said, I'll look for, no commission comment, I'll look for a motion to approve the FY 21, 2021, 22 debt management policy. So a motion by Ian.
Second.
Second by Lori. Any further comment? Hearing none, all those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none, passion unanimous.
Richard, oh, are you going to do the capital improvement separate? Because you just said that in the, I need the five-year capital improvement plan. There's separates.
If you open the item, I think it's probably.
Okay, okay, I just wanted.
Are we good with it? Do you have any?
Yeah, you want, just for clarity's sake, do you want to make your motion just to include the fire? Yeah, I'll, 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 I'll,
declaring the transfer of title of a county vehicle purchased and sold at public auction pursuant to NRS three-three-two-point-one-eight-five-eight. Shane?
All right, good morning. You know that in my office, it's never dull and it's never the same thing every day. Turns out, we sold decades ago. We sold a vehicle to a gentleman who then possessed the vehicle rightfully. We never did the title exchange. He subsequently passed away. And now his estate wants to know what to do with the vehicle and they have, they, they can't because they don't have title, they can't do anything with the vehicle. So this is kind of cleaning up a decade-old mistake. So I would ask you to pass this resolution.
Motion to. Okay, motion by Ian?
Second.
Second by Shane. Any further discussion?
Just a clarification, the name is, I think we got the name wrong though. Isn't that Warren, Warren Robison?
I don't know that off the top of my head. I'll have to, if that, if, if you're certain about that, then you can make that amendment. It's a motion.
Yeah, I'm, I'm way sure that's got to be Warren Robison. He was married to Bernice Tom. I, I really think that's Robison.
Okay. We don't want to create another mistake. I appreciate you catching that. So I'd ask for a, a motion to amend Warren Robertson to Robison and then pass that.
And the item just says the county vehicle doesn't have a name on it.
No, but it does on, um.
On the resolution.
The resolution has the names, yeah, VIN number and everything.
With a question there, um, where she, there's a surviving spouse. Where does, will it, the name actually go into Bernice?
It'll go to the estate of Mr. Robison and then it'll, it'll be dealt with and, you know.
Okay.
Okay, did we have a motion?
So.
Yeah, Ian made a motion and I second it, so I will amend my, my.
Reflect the name change.
I'll amend my motion to, change.
Okay, we have an amended motion by Ian and this amended second by Shane. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed, none, passionate animus. Item B under James on page four. It is discussion for possible action, the approval of resolution twenty-two-one dash six-oh to apply for special prosecution through the Nevada Attorney General's office.
So this, obviously, we can't get into character conflicts of individuals, but we do have a case in our office where both of the parents of the individual very closely worked with the district attorney's office to the point where I think public perception would be regardless of what we would do in our office. I think the public perception would be however we dispose of the case would, would, you know, be because of who the, who the parents are of this person. And I believe the conflict probably even extends to our local AG, Michael Mongard. So we would be asking the AG's office to take it for somebody outside of, of, of our area. Just, just so you know that without identifying anybody specifically, the, the, the parents are law enforcement and/or court-related.
Is there a financial impact on this?
Not yet. If there is, then I'll come back before. They, they've taken these cases for us in the past for free. Does not, have not charged us in the past. There's actually a new law that's not yet in effect where, you know, if, if they're not going to charge us, we don't even have to come before the commission anymore. But that's, again, not in effect yet. If they, we are in the process of taking a case for them. So I would hope they're not going to turn around and try to charge us for this one, but we'll, we'll see and if they do, we'll come back for you.
Okay, any questions? Am I anybody on the commission?
Nope, I'll go ahead and make a, a motion to approve resolution twenty-two-one dash sixty.
Motion by Lori?
Second.
Second by Ian. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none, passionate animus. And we're staying on with James, the last item to see. Is discussion for possible action, the approval to request state fire marshal to conduct the fire life safety reviews and inspections or allow Silver Lion Farms to contract with an accredited third party to conduct reviews, inspections and/or approve an alternative plan. James?
So this is essentially coming from Silver Lion Farms. What they want to be able to do is if required, have their own third-party inspector that's accredited with the ICC inspect, do their fire life safety review. I think that's appropriate if it, if it is, if that person is accredited with the ICC. The reason why they would go that route instead of the state fire marshal, the state fire marshal doesn't charge them anything. However, the state fire marshal has to follow state rules, which are different than the White Pine County rules. White Pine County has adopted Appendix C of the, of the International Building Code, which deals with agricultural buildings differently. The state fire marshal and the state of Nevada have not adopted that appendix. So they would not be able to, in their course of inspection, apply that appendix. So I guess the motion that I'm looking for, we're looking for three things. It's kind of a combination of options B and C here. Because through, and this is, this is not saying anything negative about the building department. The building department is going about this the way that they always do and they enlisted the fire marshal. So we need to tell the fire marshal, we're rescinding our request for your assistance. So that is part A of the motion. Part B is to allow that Silver Lion Farms, if required by the building and fire codes that we've adopted, if they require a fire life safety review and inspections, that that be done by somebody that they contract with who is ICC accredited. I know this is a mouthful, so if you want to make the motion, you can say it's present. And then finally, that we, that we reaffirm that Silver Lion Farms will be subject to the building codes and fire codes that we have passed, which is the two thousand and six IBC and the nineteen ninety-one Uniform Fire Code. And that's, that's essentially what Silver, Silver Lion Farms is looking for. I have no objection to any of those things. Does Donna?
I do have a clarification, if you don't mind.
Sure.
And that is basically correct, but not entirely what we need to have happen. And if you don't mind, if you'll indulge me a minute, I don't want to get lengthy. We submitted a pretty lengthy packet. It's right here. If you want me to read it, I will, to get it into the record, but.
Why, please?
If you don't mind, I'll just read a shorter version of where, where we stand and what we need, what we would like to see happen for us to go forward.
For the record, identify yourself and.
I will. Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the commission and the record. My name is Donna Bath and I will be presenting on behalf of Silver Lion Farms this morning. Before I get started, I want to thank James and the DA, DA's office, Lori for your help, Senator Gocicchia, state fire marshal and building department for participation in trying to unwind our ball of yarn. So you have in your packet for this agenda item, a very lengthy bundle of information. Just right here. But I hope each of you have had time to review before the meeting. If you've not, again, I would be happy to read it in its entirety with the attachments if you so desire. And if not, the information provided in this pack, and I hope clearly identifies how we got to where we are and why we are here this morning. We feel that Silver Lion Farms has complied with regulations from the White Pine County Building Department and State Fire Marshal's office based on what we were told was required under the county code and state law since the beginning of our agricultural project in White Pine County in two thousand and nineteen. When the state fire marshals required that we meet commercial building guidelines, including having a full-fledged fire department with flow engineering and a two-mile paved road into our farm, because we were considered a commercial building, not an agriculture building, and not within a ten-minute response time from a local fire department. It became too much for our business to handle and we started to investigate and we found the following. White Pine County formally adopted the two thousand and six edition of IBC in two thousand and eight. And additionally, at the same time, adopted Appendix C, agriculture U O P, Appendix C buildings into their codes. Appendix C is an agriculture exemption that must be formally adopted by the Board of Jurisdiction to be effective, as it was by White Pine County. After meetings, it's been verified with the White Pine County DA's office that White Pine County has not formally adopted subsequent addition.